Councilmember Clay?
Here.
Councilmember Robinson?
Here.
Councilmember Siemens?
Present.
Councilmember Snapper?
Here.
Councilmember Wright?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is council comments. If we have any comments, Councilmember Clay.
Two things help me remember that. One of them is break-ins and the other one are storage containers. So, there's been another series of car break-ins in the last couple of weeks and some cases where people's windows have been smashed, but also a whole number of cases that people have sent to me where they've left their car unlocked and someone rifled through their car. And so, I would, and they always write to me and they say, "I know, I know, you told me to lock my car, but I want to tell you that my car got broken into." So, I just want to remind people again, please lock your car. I put it on the list of things that I do at night when I go around and check my doors, I double-click my clicker on my car again, just for good measure. I think if people find fewer things to break into, they'll, they'll move on to some other place where people are forgetful. The other one is storage containers. Finally got that storage container off of Lincoln Avenue, I think it was, Lincoln or Boyd, Lincoln Avenue that has been there forever. And it turned out that the person wasn't even using it for anything related to their house. They were using it for some construction going on somewhere else in another company, not even the owner was paying to store things on our streets. So, I would like to put onto the fast track a revision of the permitting process for storage containers and maybe even have a separate one from dumpsters which you pretty much would have to be using for your house. I mean, you wouldn't have to, but it would become immediately obvious if people were showing up with outside dump loads of thing and putting it there. And really shorten the time period that someone could have a container. I think that because those containers can be moved, you can pick them up with all the stuff in and then store them off-site for, I think it's a hundred or a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month. There's no reason for people to have to have a storage container for, for six months. They can have a load-in time, load it in, move it off to the storage place and bring it back when they're, you know, finished whatever their construction is on their house. It's really unfair to the other neighbors. It's such a safety hazard to have to see around a twelve-foot-high metal box, especially where we happen to have them on tight roadways and then at these intersections, made it really tough for people and really tough for the neighbors who happen to have a driveway seated right next to where one was at. They essentially couldn't seat a back out of their driveway. So, I would really like if we could put that on the fast track. I thought I would look it up this week and see if I could put together a couple of things that, that we could bring back to the, to the council. Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson?
Not much to say except welcome Pinecrest. And I wonder, I'll ask my colleagues and city manager, have there been efforts to start a credit union in Tacoma Park before? Does anyone know of any efforts to start a credit union here?
I vaguely remember something that the city was considering it. I don't know where it went. That was ten years ago.
Yeah. We have no...
Our employees are allowed to join the Montgomery County Employees Credit Union. That's the only thing that I know of, Councilmember Robinson.
We have no local bank really to speak of. I've just, I've spoken to a number of people who've said that a credit union can really be a local bank within our, within our boundaries.
Well, if you join the co-op, then you can join Lafayette.
Lafayette Credit Union. Right. There is an option to, the nice thing about a credit union which would, it within our borders would be that it would be, would keep our money within our borders.
I'd be happy to talk with you about this, Councilmember Robinson. I've done a lot of research in my day job about this topic. And so, I'd be happy to talk with you about it. The economics of it make it very tough to run a very small credit union. So, we'd have to think about whether we can have the scale or mass to get it off the ground.
Great. Thank you.
That's it. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to welcome more residents here tonight. We have a number of them with us for the speed bump issue. There's another couple in the room as we speak. Also, you mentioned that Pat Lovelace is recovered. Last year, last week I was talking about his illness, but he is recovered and he's serving the city again and on the Health Services Committee tonight. So, he won't be with us here at the public comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright?
A couple items first. I want to make sure that everyone knows about the party/fundraiser for the mural project on Carroll Avenue. That's February 20th, this Friday, from 6:30 to 9:30 at Sam Kitterner's studio at 705 6 Carroll Avenue on the second floor. Admission is free, but we do really strongly encourage people to make some donation that's meaningful to them towards the mural project. The mural is a mural by Byron Peck, a famous muralist, that's going to be on the side of the building where the subway is. So, excited about that. Encourage people to come and have fun and drink and be merry, but also make a contribution.
And if you want to clarify, when you say on the side of the building where the subway is, you mean the business, the subway, not the metro, the subway?
That's correct. The business, the subway, right next to Old Town Auto Repair, Tacoma Old Town Auto Repair. Yes, not on the side of the... The second thing I just want to make people aware of, on February 25th, from 7:00 to 9:00, there's going to be a forum about the speed cameras. It's not a city-sponsored forum, but it is one that is using this facility and will have some people from the Constitution Project there. Thomas Nephew, who is a resident, is organizing it.
I believe that's on the license plate scanners instead of what else?
Oh, sorry, license plate scanners, yes. Not the speed cameras, the license plate scanners. Thank you for clarifying that for me, Councilmember Siemens. I don't think that should take place of the city government actually having a public forum where we give residents an opportunity to comment before we vote on or decide about the, the use of the license plate scanners by the police department. And I would encourage the city manager and mayor to find a time on the agenda either during a council session or maybe we, this should be an item that we would have at some other evening time to get people's input and maybe also invite back some of the, some of the individuals who are, have specific expertise in this area. Want to encourage people to go to the Piney Branch pool. People probably have not been encouraged a lot to do this, but went swimming on Sunday with my two kids. It was a wonderful experience. The pool is very warm and nice, even went down the slide. And my daughter actually swam for the, officially swam for the first time for about fifteen feet, which is very exciting. We have to be very clear that we need people to use the pool and to, to be able to keep it open long-term. So, we need to make sure we, we use the community resource that we have. And then lastly, just wanted to comment that I think we need to get moving on the deciding what we want on the hospital site. I know, Mayor, you've started to think about putting that in on the agenda for discussion. I think we need to get it going pretty soon because I think the certificate of need is due in April. And I think we, it seems like the Ventus Hospital is opening, open to having some sort of a binding agreement with us about what they would leave there. And I just think we need to have a public process to make sure we're, as a community, we're on, on the same page about what should be at the hospital site. So, then we can get the lawyers working on having a specific, a specific agreement before they submit their certificate of need application in early April.
Councilmember Snapper?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I too enjoyed the pool. Hope other people will, as indicated earlier, give it a try. The Sunday afternoon one is free, hard to beat the price. It's not even that expensive other times. The other thing is I want to compliment the Recreation Department, which worked in partnership with folks in the community to do a very successful winter basketball. And I hope those partnerships will continue. We'll be able to do more of those, not just the basketball, but perhaps others. I don't assume that they'll all be as quite as successful as that one, but that would be nice too. And I thoroughly support the idea of moving quickly on the wall site. I think that's really, really crucial. Thank you.
And I've just got a comment or two. One thing I wanted to do was to let people know that we now have a firm date for the forum to invite WSSC here and for members of the public to come and talk to folks in WSSC if any of you have any concerns about the work that they've been doing in the city. They're going to be here the evening of March 26th. And more details to follow. That was just firmed up today as a date. And that will be in this room. And we will have representatives from WSSC. We'll have representatives from our District 20 delegation. And we're going to invite county council members as well, so that there will be a number of folks here to talk about that. And the other thing I just want to note was, spent a lot of time in Annapolis the last few days, attended the Maryland Mayor's Conference last Thursday and Friday. And one of the things that had the opportunity to do there was to get briefings from a number of State Department Secretaries about possible avenues for using some of the stimulus money that will be coming to the state. And I passed along that information to the city manager so that we have some other firmer information on what our possibilities might be as we look to see what we can do with some federal stimulus money. Then I was joined by all of my colleagues on the council last night. And we all ventured to Annapolis for the District 20 reception, which was very interesting. Got a chance to talk to a lot of people there and then attended the Monday evening session of the state legislature. And then we all had the honor of listening to, of going to the George Washington's Birthday Celebration in the State House. And the state senate adjourned to the old senate chamber. And there was a very nice ceremony there capped by a wonderful speech by our state senator Jamie Raskin, which played to great reviews. And he'll, he'll be forwarding us a copy of that speech and, okay. It was a very interesting time to attend. And then I was in Annapolis again today, all day. Hence my outfit. And there for a council of governments reception and working on city bills that we're trying to get passed in Annapolis. So, there's plenty of opportunity for folks to go there and testify on a number of bills that are coming up in the next week or two. We've had requests to testify on possible sanctuary city legislation that's been introduced. And so, there are other opportunities to go down there. Now that all of my colleagues have been down there and tasted some of the opportunities that are there and understand a little bit better how it might work, I look forward to having some colleagues accompany me to Annapolis and do a little lobbying work down there. And I think that's, that takes care of all of the council comments. So, we will move on to additional agenda items and scheduling update. And I just wanted to point out that next Monday, February 23rd, our work session discussions are legislative update and discussion of the council grants program, which we've delayed once or twice, but I think we'll finally get to next week. And the following Monday, March 2nd, we have a presentation on the results of the classification and compensation study. And then we're well along into March. So, I just want to point those items out. The next item is adoption of the minutes. We have minutes before us for January 12th. Do I hear motion to?
Move them.
Okay, move by Councilmember Siemens, second by Councilmember Wright. Any comments on the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the minutes are adopted. The next item on the agenda is public comment period for anybody who would like to comment on anything that is not on our public hearing schedule tonight, but anything that's a work session item or anything not on the agenda, now's the time to do so. And if you'd like to come to the microphone and identify yourself and keep your comments to three minutes. Going once, going twice, okay. The next item is city manager's comments.
Just a few items this evening. Councilmember Barry was kind enough last Thursday to fill in for the mayor who was in Annapolis at our annual employee recognition event. One of the things that we do at this event is recognize those employees who reached service milestones in the prior year. And just wanted to note that we had 24 employees that we recognized who had combined service of 285 years to this community. Probably two employees in particular I just would like to comment on. One is Robert Allen, he's with the Public Works Department, who has been with us for over 35 years now. And Fred Roush, one of our police officers, who's been with us for 25, which I think is quite remarkable. The other two things I just wanted to share with the council, as you know, we were trying to, waiting in a kind of a holding pattern to get permits to get our speed cameras installed along one roadway in particular just because of state highway issues. The chief did inform me today that those permits have been secured and construction actually began. So, we'll continue to keep you updated in terms of when we think the cameras will actually be operational. And then the last item that I have is just to note, I know last week we had some brief discussion about the public works facility and the planned renovation. Wanted to let the council know that that request for proposal has gone out and responses are due at noon on March 3rd. So, we'll keep the council updated as that process continues. And that's it.
Any questions for the city manager on her report? Okay. Then the next item on our agenda is the first public hearing, and that's on the Ritchie Avenue Speed Hump Petition. Do we have anybody on the sign-up sheets for either of the public hearings? And it's, if, if you haven't signed up, it's also possible to, after we take the people who have signed up, then we'll take anybody else, so. And the first and only person who's signed up on the sheet for the Ritchie Avenue Speed Hump public hearing is Kenny Jones. And would you like to speak? And I'll, and I'll also say that Mr. Jones was a longtime employee of the city who reached all of those milestones that the city manager complimented the current employees on. So, I, I'd also like to note that Mr. Jones was a long-serving employee of the city as well.
And a hero in the city.
Who stopped a car which struck.
Hello. I'm Mr. Jones, 114 Ritchie Avenue. Like you say, longtime employee, 48 years. We complain with speed bumps. Of course, the speed bumps in the city, hate to tell you, but I put most of them down. I didn't know what I do, but I put them down back in 1970, 80. Me and Roland Booger, he was in charge of the street department. So, all I own was, you can get at me about it, can we put them down? So, right now, we like to have a speed bump, 117 and 114. I would like to be on the curb because the speeders, they come around in the morning and evening too. Most I come in the morning, on the cell phone, speeding, they're going to end up in my yard. So, I like speed bumps, hold them down a little bit, because it may not, but I like to have them.
So, you're, so you're in favor of the speed bump then?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on behalf, on, about Ritchie Avenue Speed Humps? I don't want to, if you just come to the microphone. And if anybody else wants to speak after he's finished, you can just kind of form a little, a little line there. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Jose Luis Conturas Vidal. I live on 117 Ritchie Avenue. And I'd like to thank the City of Tacoma Park Council for considering our request to put, install a speed bump, basically around the corner where I live. And I, I see a lot of traffic and high-speed traffic, you know, people are cutting through our street or, you know, we have neighbors and the City of Tacoma Park Public Works. And I have seen many instances of close encounters. And I think we're just waiting for an accident to happen there. And we, we see this as one, one of, 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 one option to, to improve safety in our neighborhood and to help our children and all your citizens in that street. And so, I'm happy that, that most of our neighbors on Ritchie Avenue were enthusiastic about this measure. And I would make time to, not enable to, to tell you about some other options that we think are necessary to increase the safety in, in our streets. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, my name is Richard Payne. I'm the, live at 39 Oswego Avenue. I'm the president of the Ritchie Citizens Association, which is the Citizens Association for residents of Ritchie Avenue, Geneva Avenue and, and Oswego Avenue and the Franklin Apartments. Over the past year, we've discussed the issues of the volume of traffic and the speed along Ritchie Avenue. And we're very concerned about the safety for children and the quality of life for residents. We've got a number of young families who've moved into the area and we're very happy about that. But it brings some responsibilities as well. You know, I wouldn't say we have a, a complete unanimity of support for all of the measures to address this, this very real, real problem. But the neighborhood's committed to working with the town and county to find ways to address the speed and volume of traffic along Ritchie Avenue. This is a major sort of crossroad between Maple and Piney Branch, as you might know. So, one of the proposals that we've discussed is this installation of the speed bump on Ritchie Avenue. And this is very close to a corner where traffic comes around without slowing down. And bizarrely, you come around the corner and then see the speed bump if you're going from, towards the, towards the east. So, cars are actually accelerating from the previous speed bump into the corner before they, they, they see this one at all. That might explain the impression of speed. So, we strongly support the efforts of neighbors to improve the safety of Ritchie Avenue, including this installation of the speed bump. We've also met with town and county engineers on the issue of possible traffic restrictions and about limiting the public works traffic along Oswego and Geneva. And I think we sent in a flyer about this where we have three proposals which we're looking at. One is to, this speed bump proposal to slow traffic on Ritchie. The other one is to restrict Ritchie Avenue access during rush hour. And we're working with our neighbors from the North and Silver Spring and councilwoman Valerie Irvin and Terry Siemens on, on this in terms of getting the traffic study done. And I thank the council here for its support for that study, financial support. And then also to reduce volume by, by routing the traffic, the public works traffic out of the lower entrance on Ritchie and not this sort of passage that they made down Oswego Avenue. And we'd appreciate support with limiting the, the public works traffic on Oswego and the access through the Oswego Avenue gate, which has never made much sense to us. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on Ritchie Avenue proposal? Okay, then we will bring that public hearing for the Ritchie Avenue Speed Hump petition to a close. And we will move on to the next item, which is the Pinecrest Traffic Calming Project public hearing. And I have a couple of names on this sign-up sheet and then, as before, we'll take anybody else who'd like to make any comments. So, the first to sign up is Bridget Bowers.
Hi, my name's Bridget Bowers. I live at 6409 West Moreland Avenue and I am the president of the Pinecrest Community Association. Thank you for having us here tonight. Since the extensive walls and associate study, Pinecrest Community Association has embarked upon several months of consensus building regarding traffic calming in our area. And we've done that in conjunction with city representatives Alona Blanchard and Daryl Brithwaite. Given the fact that Pinecrest is bordered by two major roadways, New Hampshire Avenue and Eastern, it makes us a prime route for cut-through traffic. This coupled with the fact that there are many children in our neighborhood makes traffic calming one of our number-one goals. We've worked hard to build a comprehensive plan looking at all areas of Pinecrest with community consensus to solve the traffic issues in our neighborhood. All of those, those meetings have, again, been in consensus with the city and have been well-publicized to our neighbors. Phone voting, petitions, in-person votes, et cetera, have all been utilized to build this consensus. Other areas of Tacoma Park have had the opportunity to capitalize on city funds for traffic calming measures in other wards. And we would really appreciate the opportunity to work with the city in implementing these measures to make our neighborhood a more pedestrian-friendly area for both children and neighbors, improving our quality of life. So, thank you for hearing us today and we look hopefully forward to working with you on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person to sign up is Jane Holmes.
Not to be redundant, I'm Jane Holmes, treasurer of Pinecrest Community Association, but I'm just here to enforce that I was present and there was consensus in our association meetings. Dan participated and especially thanks to the city staff that was there to help along. And we're ready to move. So, it would be nice to see it actually passed and, and the money released so that we can finish the work. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last person to sign up is Jerome Franklin.
Of course, my name is Jerome Franklin. I reside at 6426 Fourth Avenue. And, well, first of all, I've never been a, really liked speed bumps, but I know they're necessary to control traffic. But one of the issues I see here is about the raised intersection at Kansas Lane and West Moreland. And, well, that's one thing I do particularly like is because usually at intersections, that's where you need people to really slow down. And although sometimes in the middle of the block, that's good, but in intersections, that's where we have most of the problems, is people don't stop at stop signs. And that's why I think the raised intersection, to me, would be a better plan. And, well, one other thing I would like to bring up, although it's, it still does the traffic, there are two intersections that we have at Fourth Avenue and at Poplar, you know, Fourth Avenue and Poplar, and also Sligo Mill and, oh, shoot, shouldn't know this. Orchard. Where I think vehicles are allowed to park too close to the intersection, especially the one on, at the Sligo Mill because of the trucks they have up there. And I think it's unsafe because you can't see, it's a blind curb because of the trucks parked close to the intersection. So, I think that's something else that needs to be addressed as far as having the curb being marked for no parking close to those intersections because those are very busy intersections. And that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment? If you can just come to the microphone.
Hello. My name is Ian Hell. I live at 6421 Fourth Avenue, which is actually between, oh, it's between West Moreland and Poplar. There's a road. Thank you, yes. Anyway, there's a whole bunch of issues here. For the last two years, I've kind of watched this decision whether to put speed bumps or not, or do something to calm the traffic between basically Poplar and Fourth going up to West Moreland and Kansas. I just want to go through a list briefly. Very significant, and I don't think there's any, any issue there. There is significant, and I don't think there's any issue there, traffic between Poplar and Eastern, especially during rush hour, which is actually the same time the kids go to school. It is used as a cut through. People drive down there very fast, often failing to stop at any of the signs. Your own traffic study confirmed that this was a cut through and that this was happening, and a larger percent of the drivers were actually not following any of the signs. Additionally, while there might be police enforcement, they certainly can't stay there 24 hours a day, and it doesn't appear that any police enforcement has done any of this behavior at all. There's no sidewalks on half of Fourth Avenue. And where there is sidewalks, you have to jump across the street several times to kind of connect the dots. Finally, there is a lot of, there are a lot of children that live in that area who are playing outside, and it really is a matter of time before something happens. Having said all this, giving you kind of the preamble of what I'm going to say is, the Pinecrest community right there along that avenue is one of the only places I know that there aren't actually speed bumps. Clearly, people feel they work. They put them all along Poplar, and they work. We can't seem to stop the people with signs. There doesn't seem to be enough place enforcement. So I'm not quite sure how much more we can say to say that we do need this done, and fairly soon. I have three kids of my own, they're all under four. People are coming down that street. While you might think 25 miles an hour is a reasonable rate, on a residential area neighborhood, it seems pretty fast, and people are coming down at least one and a half to two times that speed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in this public hearing? Okay, then we will bring this public hearing to a close, and we will move along to the work session discussion of the Ritchie Avenue speed hump petition. Does staff have anything that you want to say on this one?
I think our comments are included in the cover sheet relative to this issue that was before you this evening. Basically, what we do in these situations is review the request and see how it matches up with existing city code. In this case, as well as frequently in other cases, the request does not comply with the language in the city code in terms of distances between speed bumps and distance from stop signs and whatnot. That's all laid out in the cover sheet information that you have. One of the areas that was a little vague to us is on the petition application itself, there was a handwritten reference requesting a slot in the speed bump and also requesting a wide speed bump. I think we were under the impression of what was meant by the slot in the speed bump because it also indicated a place for bikes to pass, also indicated that the preference would be to have that slot in the middle of the speed bump. The city engineer and myself feel fairly strongly that we would not recommend that profile of a speed bump to be installed. One of the unfortunate aspects of a slot or a depression in a speed bump is drivers will tend to aim for it with at least one set of their wheels. And in the case where you have it in the center of the street, what you're doing is then encouraging cars to get out of their lane so that one set of their wheels could ride through that slot. The way we install speed bumps, both gutter lanes do have flat access through the gutter itself, so that's generally the route that bicycles take around speed bumps. However, you know, it's not a comfortable ride for bicyclists over speed bumps, but we don't recommend putting a slot in the speed bump itself. There is also a sidewalk on one side of the street on Ritchie Avenue that was installed several years ago, which would be another access point for bikes to hop off the road, go on a sidewalk, and then make their way back to the road again. We weren't at all clear what the request was relative to a wide speed bump, so I don't know if any of the folks that were involved in that want to speak to that this evening so we can make sure that we're, you know, understanding the request and being able to answer it correctly. The price and the assumption that we've put out in front of you for a speed bump, a single speed bump, is using the basic city standard speed bump, which I believe is a three and a half inch high-rise speed bump, sort of a hump on a bump, which is the classic city speed bump. We also, on occasion, install the county-style speed bumps, which have a more gentler curve. The other point of concern, which isn't referenced in our code at all, but the city engineer felt the need to raise it, is it's not generally recommended to put a speed hump on a curve. Normally, cars are slowing down on a curve, and so the assumption is you wouldn't benefit much by adding a speed bump to the curve because the cars are already slowing to drive the curve, so a speed bump isn't going to increase the amount of slow, you know, the slowdown that a car might, a driver might choose to make in that instance. A better option might be if the issue is speed or changing lanes around the curve may be to put a better marking as to the center line of the street or reflective bumps in the center of the street to try to encourage cars to stay in their lane. We weren't really clear whether or not the issue was people being out of the lane at the curve and a difficulty in vehicles passing each other, or what might be best done to address that. So those are just a couple of general comments. Again, they're all included in the cover sheet, so hopefully nothing I've said this evening is new information.
Councilwoman Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. Couple of issues that have been brought up. First of all, I'm not a real enthusiast of speed bumps, but I think there are extenuating circumstances in this situation that bring me to support the request. First of all, the curve is a big part of the issue, and it's the speed of the cars coming down through that section of Ritchie Avenue. That happens to be a section of the street where we have many young families with very young children and also homes that do not have backyards where children can really play. The terrain there is very steep, and the backyards don't lend themselves to big wheels or whatever the vehicle of choice is for young children in this year. So the kids do spend more time in the driveways in front of the house than would be if they had backyards. The issue about putting, I don't think anyone is requesting to put the speed hump in the middle of the curve, and in fact, the location that's been suggested in the petition is a location that is the same distance from the apex of the curve as the existing speed hump is on the other side of the curve. It's, the thought is that people coming from Maple Avenue up Ritchie Avenue towards Piney Branch do encounter a speed bump a short distance before the curve, and so those cars do tend to slow down and go around the curve in a safe manner. The cars, however, coming the other direction from Piney Branch Road towards Maple Avenue have a greater distance between the last speed hump and the curve itself, and they tend to go into the curve at a speed that looks unsafe, and in fact, most frequently, as Ms. Braithwaite said, they do cross the center line and take the inside of the curve, causing conflict with cars coming the other way. But I think more importantly, just it's right in the area of homes with kids playing out front, and it's, I think the idea with the speed hump is that it is more likely to slow the cars down for the curve than reflectors or anything bollards might do, but I don't think that's a real choice in the middle of the street. The, I know that some of the neighbors have talked about a speed table as opposed to a speed hump. I think that the overall desire of the request though was for a speed hump itself. And the other thing I would just point out is that although there is not unanimous support for the speed hump, that I think that it is pretty unanimous for the residents of the immediate area where the speed hump would be located, and aside from the drivers going up and down the road, those are the neighbors who would have to endure the additional noise that's caused by the speed humps. So that's the foundation of my support, and I encourage my colleagues to also support it.
Other comments? Councilwoman Stepper.
So let me see if I understand this, Terry. What you're suggesting is that the speed hump, I have the little map here, that the speed hump be located sort of proximately the same distance off the curve that the current one is off the curve, but on the other side, because you can't, you wouldn't, that curve, you can't see around the curve, so.
Right.
Right, so if you're coming from the other direction, you don't see that there's a speed hump just on the other side of the curve.
That's correct.
It looks like open road to you when you're going, yeah.
Unless you're familiar with Tacoma Park.
Unless you're familiar with Tacoma Park. And I have a question that was a follow-up to the question that was raised about the entrance to Public Works, whether it's through Oswego or through Ritchie, and I wondered if the Public Works Director could speak to that request. I know this has come up before, I just don't remember what you had said the last time.
Yeah, we've had this discussion both directly with the Ritchie Avenue Citizens Association as well as reading in various emails and other ways that information gets passed around the community. I can forward you, you know, formal responses that I've provided through the city manager and myself to the request. There are certain cases that, and certain situations, that the only available egress and ingress to the department is from the Ritchie Avenue side of the street versus the Oswego Avenue side. I think all of you have seen our facility. The Ritchie Avenue has a very steep driveway that comes up, but in a fairly short entrance way to that. There are certain types of vehicles, particularly trash trucks when loaded, that can't make that change in grade either in or out, so their only way in and out of our facility is on Oswego Avenue. All the staff have been advised to use the Ritchie Avenue entrance or exit for any trip that they can make that has the option of being able to go either way. I think it'll be a constant education and a constant effort on our part to continue to remind employees to use the Ritchie Avenue driveway when they can. But there are certain cases where we can't based on the types of vehicles that we travel and the type of equipment that we have.
And I would ask, as we look at some renovations of the Public Works facility, that we look at the regrading of that area so that the trash trucks will be able to use that, so all the vehicles will be able to use it, and just use the back entrance and exit for emergency situations.
We can certainly ask the architect to review that. We don't have very much space there in terms of options for doing a serpentine driveway or whatever up the area, but we'll certainly ask him. What's that?
I say the tool library is gone now, so there's a little bit more space for a more gradual transition.
Yeah, well, again, we'll certainly ask the architects to review that. I was still a little unclear about the location for the speed bump request. If you're asking that the new speed bump be located the same distance from the first speed bump that you encounter coming from Maple, based on my measurements, it's about 130 feet from the corner. So if we were to put another speed bump 130 feet on the other side, you'd end up being 120 feet from the existing speed bump. I just want to throw out that an option might be to move that existing speed bump closer to the corner and in that way satisfy the need of having the speed bumps close to the corner without having a speed bump and then 120 feet later, another speed bump on a curve, and another 150 feet later, another speed bump. So that maybe the best avenue would be to remove that speed bump that perhaps was located too far away from the corner and move it to the location that's closest to the corner.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm a little frustrated because I did ask the city engineer to look at that and let me know, you know, if there was a problem locating another speed bump in that area when this first came up. And the indication at that time was that, no, there wouldn't be any problem putting it between, there's two driveways that are right close to each other, and the speed bump could go between those two driveways.
Perhaps it was just a misunderstanding of what a problem might be. Technically, we can locate a speed bump fairly much anywhere, whether or not he'd recommend that a speed bump be located between those two existing speed bumps is probably a different matter.
Well, I would say that we probably should approve the addition of a speed bump and then work out the details with Public Works Department.
Other questions or comments? Councilwoman Wright.
Just quickly, if we're not going to do the groove in the speed bump for bicycles, I guess I'm a little concerned because I imagine cars probably park on where the gutter is, so not in that street?
Not on the curve.
Oh, not on the curve, okay. So it may not be an issue with this situation, but I think we have been talking about, as we install speed bumps, being conscious of trying to be a more bicycle-friendly city. So I do think we should think about what the solution is related to that. Then the second question I have is, I know we're planning to buy a new recycling truck, and I'm wondering if the recycling truck can go up the Ritchie Avenue entrance based on the grading of the slope and the design of the truck.
The new recycling truck will be a large-size rearload packer, which is what we currently use for trash collection, so it'll be the same, though slightly larger than our biggest truck currently. So it's our assumption that it will bottom out in coming from Ritchie Avenue up the driveway. The back end, basically, would bottom out. It's a 37-yard truck. Generally, trash trucks are 25. Our current one is, we have a 25 and a 31. This is a 37-yard, so it's a larger vehicle.
Thank you. Other questions? I just have one or two comments. One of the things that concerned me was putting a speed hump as close to a curve as the one proposed is, but I kind of feel like it's, in a way, putting it there is fixing the problem of coming around a curve and finding a speed hump. This way, there's matching ones so that you've already been alerted to it by the first one that you get to, so the second one isn't so much of a problem. So in this way, it kind of fixes the issue of having them close to a curve by having a pair of them, and it avoids that problem of locating it too close to it. I agree that we shouldn't put the slot in the middle, but I think we ought to figure out a way to make sure that we are bicycle-friendly. On the question of the access to the Public Works facility and using various entrances, if the Public Works Director could tell me whether I'm correct in remembering that the sign for going in the Ritchie Avenue entrance says something like "Public Works Vehicles Only," is that what that sign says?
Yeah.
I know we have that sign on the Oswego Avenue side. I'm assuming we have it on the Ritchie Avenue side. It, historically, it's been on our gates on both sides of the building.
Right.
And public access is from Oswego.
So public access is from Oswego, and so I'm wondering whether there's a difficulty in removing that sign and encouraging any vehicles other than Public Works vehicles to use that Ritchie Avenue entrance, or whether that would cause problems with vehicles coming through the yard.
Yeah, we wouldn't want non-city, non-Public Works vehicles to drive up Ritchie Avenue. Basically, you're right in the center of our yard then.
Okay, okay.
Not a place for people with questions.
Okay. And then the final thought is, in terms of trying to work out a way for the larger vehicles to access there and not bottom out, the thought I had was what we might consider is moving that entrance up the hill and therefore reducing the difference in grade that have to go up there. It might make it so that there isn't that issue of bottoming out as we consider the renovation of the Public Works facility.
That'll certainly be addressed and looked into by the architects.
Okay. So do we have, sorry, Councilmember Robinson and then Councilwoman Stepper.
Daryl.
Have a seat.
We're to the bike, the bike access around speed bumps, and you said that at the corner, at the curve, there's no parking, but you also recommended moving speed bumps a little bit, perhaps, to even bit, perhaps, to even them out, and if you did that, would there be parking over where the speed bumps were to be moved?
Oh, yeah. Well, my, based on the petition that we received, it asked for the location of the speed bump to be between 117 and 121, which is just slightly past the corner itself. So this is new information that I'm hearing this evening about it being 120 or 150 feet from the corner. At 120 or 150 feet, you're outside of the corner, and there is parking that would be potentially available there. Having not looked at that specifically, I think most of those houses have driveways, but I don't know what the ratio of car, street parking versus driveway parking is.
Do we have a policy about where speed bumps are and where and how bikes can get around them? I suspect we don't, that's not.
We have a policy, well, let me say, we have city code about where speed humps should be located. We tend to largely place them in sometimes areas that don't match the city code language. There is nothing that I've ever come across, particular reference to bicycles or access to bicycles, and I think that is certainly something that needs some further research.
Do you have any ideas about how to get bikes around speed bumps when they're?
Oh, good. Well, maybe I'll defer to.
I don't.
Councilmember Snapper. Many cities use, I don't know what the English word is, because I've seen them most often in Mexico, they're little metal bumps. They look like a half helmet.
Instead of a speed bump?
Instead of a solid speed bump. And these metal things are positioned in sort of diagonal stripes so that you really couldn't turn your wheel enough to ride between them, and they're actually pretty close together. But a bike could easily go through that, and a bike also would need to slow down, which is the idea also, and then they could go through it. So I think there are alternative designs that aren't, they may in fact end up being more expensive because you're buying, you know, metal things which then have to be pounded into the asphalt.
I've been down some Mexico streets where they just put bricks in the middle of the.
Yeah, well, I'm talking about the intentional designed ones.
Those are cheaper than metal. That's suggesting that.
Right.
Okay.
I'll ask the city engineer to take a look at that.
Yeah. As someone who's gone over Tacoma Park's speed bumps on a bike, I can say they do need to slow down to go over those.
Some more than others.
Some more than others.
Maybe that's what caused a certain individual to get in the car and go through the stop sign instead. Or was that on a bicycle?
On a bicycle.
On a bicycle, okay. So, do we have agreement on the council that we want to have staff come back to us with an ordinance for first reading for the speed hump on Ritchie Avenue without a slot at this point? They can come back with options as need be on making it more bicycle-friendly, and I think we would probably want to have that as a general policy, not just tied to this particular.
Single speed bump.
Bump, right.
Yeah, I would agree with that, and I would, prior to the next meeting, meet with the Public Works Director and the city engineer to make sure that we're in agreement next time we come to meeting.
Okay, good.
I do agree that we should move forward, but it does strike me that it always seemed like the opportunity will be the next speed bump where we should actually address the bicycle issue. So it might be nice to have some.
If we have it for this one, that would be a good place to start.
Yeah, okay, good.
All right, so that takes care of the Ritchie Avenue speed hump petition. I noted that on our agenda, we don't have any discussion of the Pinecrest traffic calming in the work session, but I think it would be entirely appropriate to do that given that we have had the public hearing, we've had a work session discussion, and we have the folks here, and if staff can let me know if there's any particular issues that we have to deal with on this.
At this moment, we have no issues that staff has identified to raise, however, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Okay, because we had a previous work session discussion on this, and, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought that we were in general agreement with the proposal. Councilmember Snapper, did you have a question or a comment?
There is more question.
Sure.
I do remember this, but what I don't remember is the removal of signage throughout the neighborhood, the turn, restricting turns and all that.
Yes.
Sort of the, can you talk a little around that?
Sure.
And I had a question about that, too, and as I read through the item, it looked like there was a proposal to remove some and leave some.
The proposal is to remove all of the turn, all of the signs restricting turns that are in the neighborhood, which, in that area. So any of the signs that restrict turns would be removed. The general consensus was that they aren't very clear, aren't enforced, and people don't tend to pay much attention to them, and then some of them actually restrict people's access.
So the idea is that the hardscape would be much more effective than the signs?
Correct.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Councilmember Robinson.
Yeah, I hope, I'm glad of the timing of asking Ms. Braithwaite to come back on the bicycle-friendly speed bumps, and I'd like to think about those in Pinecrest, too. It's an opportunity, there are obviously more in Pinecrest.
Right, and we'll have two readings of ordinances, and then the asphalt plants have to open up in the spring, so there's a little bit of time here where we can try and get those slots lined up.
I have one other comment on that, which is the cost, and I saw that the speed bump to Ritchie is around $1,400 in asphalt, if I had that, if I saw that right. So I was kind of doing a tally up to get to the $49,000 for the traffic calming in Pinecrest, and the four bumps come out, it looks like it would maybe be $6,000, and I don't know how much a raised intersection is, but I.
$15,000 is our estimate.
For, so it's 10 times the cost of the speed bump?
Yes.
Is that because there's 10 times the asphalt, or it's 10 times, or some number of times more asphalt and then more difficult to put it in place?
Those two combined.
Those two combined.
They're large, difficult, and mainly they take up a lot of asphalt, because you're covering the entire area of the intersection with an additional three inches of asphalt, and then you're tapering all four sides.
Okay, so 15 each, that's 30 for the two raised intersections, six for the four speed bumps, 36, 13 left over for the ballers and the bump out and the sidewalk.
Right.
And can you do the sidewalk and ballers and bump out for 15?
Right, between the curb work and then the sidewalks, and then the ballers are actually going to be crash resistant, so they're going to have to be fairly solid and well-planted. And then there's approximately 4,000 to 5,000 for contingencies.
For what?
Contingency, a 10%.
Okay.
Other comments? Other comments? Okay, so we have consensus to go forward on this proposal as well, so you'll come back with the ordinances for both of them.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all for coming for the public hearings. And I think maybe we'll just take a quick five-minute break and then go on to our last item, which is a discussion of the commercial revitalization overlay zone and clarifications. We're being joined by Alana Blanchard from City Staff, and I'm sorry, I forget your name from Park and Planning.
Robert Kernberg with Park and Planning.
Robert Kernberg, welcome.
Thank you.
And this was, this came up as an issue because Park and Planning wanted some clarification from the city on what we might like to do with this that is a little unclear in language, in current language, and so there were inquiries at the council, and we decided this was worth a discussion, so we're here to do that, and hopefully we can resolve where we'd like to go with that this evening and provide some clarification to Park and Planning.
Well, I think it started before that because this applicant, I believe, is listed in your packet, who actually went to file a permit or attempted to file a permit with the county, and the county had, I guess, maybe some of the same concerns, and directed them over to our shop to give clarification on whether a site plan would be required or not. And in our reading of it, initially, we said we don't think a site plan is required, but as we usually do, we call and talk to Alana and make sure before we send the applicant on their way to say, go ahead and file a building permit and go through the entire process, and then have them kick back and say, no, you know, that was not the right step, you needed to file a site plan and go forward with that. So I think before we let them go in further, we brought it to Alana's attention, and I think that's what generated the momentum to you.
So, Alana, if you just want to walk us through fairly briefly the discrepancy and the question, and lay out a little bit of what we need to.
Sure.
Come up with here, and also, as you do that, there was one thing I noticed in the packet, once I get to the item, that I had a question on, and maybe you can address it as you go through, which is the first page behind the blue sheet, where you have a list of auto-related businesses, and my sense is that that's all the auto-related businesses, but you have not identified the ones adjoining or confronting, or is this all of the ones that are joining or confronting? So that we possibly come up with all of these or a subset of these.
I'll answer that one first because the answer's pretty easy. That's more or less complete, this has the auto-related businesses, but they are not all adjoining or confronting. So some of these would be affected by any position that Park and Planning or the Department of Permanently Services would take on clarifying this, but some of them, because they're adjacent only to commercial or parks, might not be, might, would not be affected by any decision.
Okay, and if you can clarify, I have a good sense of what adjoining is, but I'm not sure I could give you a good definition of what confronting is.
Across the street?
Across the street.
Okay.
However, Kitty Corner is not adjoining or confronting. Correct? Some people have told me that, I may be incorrect.
We tell them to include them in the list anyway when they notice, so I think we do view that as, I'm not sure.
So it's essentially sharing a boundary, not sharing a point?
If you share a point, then you're, then you are adjoining, but if you're across the street in Kitty Corner, too, you may not be confronting.
If that point, if that point has, if you cross the street to get to the point, you're not in.
Yeah.
Okay. That helps in thinking about.
Is there a clarifying question?
Sure.
Are.
Well, then, let's get this clear before we go on.
Healy Surgeon or Tacoma Old Town Auto Service or Tacoma Park Auto Clinic, are any of those affected by this? Would be my question.
Right. I believe that the, and I'm less familiar with this, if the fire station property wraps around behind those properties, then they're not adjoining or confronting, but if it does not wrap, then they are, and I'm trying to visualize this, I didn't, I should have brought a map with me because I'm trying to visualize what's across the street. I know there are some residential properties on Carol or Ethan Allen or Philadelphia, that section of the roadway.
Whatever you call it.
MD 410, but I'm not sure if they're across from the fire station or if they're across from Healy Surgeons.
I think Healy Surgeons would be confronting.
Right.
And the, whatever it is now, that's the Liberty Station, is not either joining or confronting.
Though.
Well, part of this confronting is the first house down Grand Avenue.
Oh, maybe.
Yeah.
Maybe.
And that's the property.
That's the particular, yeah, Liberty is RNS, it is confronting a house on Grand Avenue.
Okay.
Smell smoke.
Pardon?
Smell smoke.
If we do, it's somebody outside smoking a cigarette.
It's in my lap, huh?
No, it's smoking cigarettes, man.
Probably, they're probably standing outside the door.
Yeah. So I think, now we're clear on adjoining and confronting.
Right.
But I'm still not clear on which properties are.
It would probably take a map, if you'd like, I think.
Potentially all of them that you've brought up.
As long as I don't have to vote on something before I know, then you don't need to give a map.
Other examples of businesses that would be affected by this are the Glass Experts, which are on Honey Branch Road, United Globe Autobots, which is on Flower Avenue. Possibly Healy Surgeons, I think definitely Healy Surgeons and possibly the Tacoma Park Auto Clinic. Langley Auto Sales and Service, I believe that that one is affected, I'm not positive. And I don't believe that either the Sunoco or the Texaco are affected because they have a commercial property that wraps around the backs of those properties, so they are probably not adjoining or confronting residential. So essentially, the commercial revitalization overlay zone gives more community control over the development of commercial properties in Tacoma Park, and there are two sections in the zone that apply to auto-related uses that are considered non-conforming, although they're also considered, they are in conformance with the zone, but they're non-conforming.
They're non-conforming.
So the first part that refers to them refers to the site plan process, and that part is actually very clear and states that non-conforming uses do not have to go through site plan and may expand up to 1,000 square feet under the permit process. And it says only non-conforming buildings would need to go through the site plan process to expand up to 1,000 square feet. However, the last, the very last part of the zone for existing buildings and uses, which covers non-conforming buildings and non-conforming uses, says that any building or use as identified may expand up to 1,000 square feet, subject to site plan review in accordance with the part that details the. in accordance with the part that details the site plan process.
Yeah, if I may, if we go back to the, under the Procedure for Application and Approval, which is 59C 18.214, under B, which is where we felt this property that came in where it applied, was an addition of approximately 700 square feet. Now, we didn't take into account whether, what the use was, because that's not what this says, this is a building. And so I, what I believe Alana is going to is, in the next section, it references both buildings and uses, so if you go to existing building and uses under special provisions, there's BI, which is for building, double I, which is for use, and then, of course, there's the catch-all that says you have to go through site plan if you expand up to 1,000 square feet. So where we felt this property, or how we, an expansion of less than 1,000 square feet, we felt that this provision, because again, we didn't look at use, we looked at the building because that's what the language is, that they fit within this subject here. But I do believe that the confusion is when you go back to, when you go to the last section under existing building and uses, it is a little bit unclear as to what process you go through, whether you go through that site plan process irrespective of whether it's a building or a use. So it's, it's, it's a little, I can't say it's tricky, it just needs some clarification. On our end, we felt that the application, when it came in, met that first provision. But I can see why DPS probably kicked it over us, over to us to say, "Please clarify," and then we kicked it aside.
And the issue is that the site plan process is very expensive, right?
Well, it's, the site plan process is expensive, yes, but I think it, a much more intensive process where we look at compatibility, and we look at the other special provisions in the cross, compatibility being the biggest one, and looking at the uses and how those uses interact, or how they work together or not. So I think it's really the review process that's more intensive, which is what that section would do.
Does, does the commercial revitalization overlay zone trigger a green, the green tape program for the site plan?
No.
That's only the enterprise zone?
Yes. The green tape zone is specific to the enterprise zone areas.
Green tape is an expedited passage through Park and Planning. And what is the current typical turnaround or beginning to end timeframe for a site plan review?
All right. That's a loaded question, but...
Like, what is it now and what is it usually?
Well, no, I think a lot of it depends on both, you know, how complicated of a case it is, what kind of either, you know, opposition or major issues there are, and how quickly an applicant can turn around things on their end. It could be, six months would be my guess to just say on an average would be the turnaround to get you to the planning board from when they submit.
And in our experience, first time or individual developers tend to hire engineers who are slower at turning around documents. Would that be?
Well, it depends. I mean, it depends on the applicant, yes.
But it can be more time-consuming if it's the first time that someone's going through the process than someone who's gone through it multiple times.
So it would be fair to say that if the end result of this is to expand the instances in which site plan is required, that the people doing that would be looking at potentially six months and $60,000 added to their process?
I mean, we've heard that figure, and I can't fault for that. A lot of it would depend on their consultants, I would imagine, but that may be correct.
Do we, do we know the cost estimate for this particular expansion?
I don't.
Alana, do you?
And I'm not sure I'd want to know it, because I'd want to make the...
That's true.
The decision based on policy for the, for the general class of people rather than a particular.
I guess where I was coming from on that, Mayor, is are there, are there different levels of site plan examination, or are there different, based on the size of the project? So if it's a small project, is there one kind of way that you treat that project, different from a large project?
No, there's not. The level of review and I guess scrutiny might, might come in when there's an overlay zone, and there's definitely more work involved when you have an overlay zone. In this case, you have Tacoma Park, which also weighs in, which adds another layer to that entire process. And you have some of the same...
But hopefully, that's integrated with your process.
It is.
We don't require additional documentation, we just use the same documentation.
Right.
But there are additional copies required. One, will, will an RFSD be required? So they would have to do with, there are multiple things that are considered in a site plan by law, so that would be stormwater, forest and delineation...
But that's before you even submit.
Traffic study.
It would be warranted, yes.
That's called the pre-preliminary hearing, am I right?
No, that's what is required to submit an application.
Okay, and where does the pre-preliminary hearing come in?
We, we have a pre-preliminary process, but there's a community hearing that has to occur before you even submit the application now. Now, that's new as of the last two years, I believe, where you have to actually meet with the community before you even submit the application.
And the pre-preliminary process is where you meet with the developer to work out some of the details in advance, am I right?
That's correct. That's just a pre-application process.
Counselor, am I right, you got a question?
Just wanted to understand how the historic zone connects into this. So if we decided that they didn't have to go through, for something like this, they didn't have to go through this process, but a property similar to this in the area was in the historic zone, is there, is the historic zone, historic district, create some sort of use review process that would be analogous in some way, or?
The historic district provides an additional review of the development in the site, so the appearance of the building and the, any, any additional structures that may be on the site.
And we typically, if we know that a site is in a historic district and requires the Historic Preservation Commission to weigh in, we request that they go through that process first, or in conjunction with a site plan review, because in many cases, there could be other things added to that application. Typically, it's architecturally related, but not always, so we typically want them to go through that, and eventually, they have to give a historic area work from it to do the work anyway.
And are any of these properties, I'm particularly interested in Healy Surgeon, the Old Town Auto Service, and the Tacoma Park Auto Clinic, are those all in the historic district?
Those are all in the historic district. The...
But RNS is not, right?
RNS is.
Oh, RNS is also.
RNS is also. The two businesses that are off of Flower Avenue are not in the historic district. The one that's on Honey Branch and the one that's on Flower Avenue are not in the historic district.
So this comes down to if we were to recommend that the more stringent process prevail, that it would be bringing in non-conforming uses into the site plan process. Is that correct?
I think they're already non-conforming uses, just the virtue of them being adopted into the SMA or what became, what's part of all the uses that were existing there before the cross was created. So you're actually incorporating those uses in there right now, and...
But, but it would, I'm trying to go back to the, to the, we're talking on the, on the blue sheet about the process for application approval appears to require only non-conforming buildings, not non-conforming uses. Are we not worried about non-conforming uses?
The question...
Restate what it is that we need to give input on.
Okay, so my question is, is should non-conforming uses, as currently limited to expansion of 1,000 square feet only, so a non-conforming use cannot expand past 1,000 square feet, under that limitation, should they be required to go through site plan, which is a fairly expensive and drawn-out process and requires a certain amount of perseverance on the part of the person who wants the addition? Or should, should the process be a permit process, which also requires some perseverance, but considerably less money and time? When you go through site plan, you still go through the permit process, so it's an additional process to the site, to the, site plan is additional to the permit process, so the plan will still be reviewed, but it would be reviewed at an administrative level, and it would not be reviewed in terms of neighborhood compatibility. However, there are certain basic provisions in, in the administrative reviews, such as setbacks, height...
Development standards.
Development standards, such as height, setback, screening, less than...
Parking requirements, yes.
Parking requirements, screening of parking, and other things that would occur during permit review, is that correct?
Many of those would be. I mean, if you're putting in new parking, you still have to provide landscaping, which goes into the whole, that's 59E, which is the section of the code that requires you to do a certain amount of landscaping. There's, you have a height requirement, there's setback requirements that you would have to do regardless of whether you went through site plan or not. So yes, I mean, that's part of the permit review. Permit review, though, as you noted, is not public, so I mean, that's clearly administrative.
And so, let me see if I can take a slight leap to where I think this could get. That isn't the immediate question that's come up, but is the potential long-term implication of whatever we come up with, which is that in the, in the ones that seem to be the most sensitive that we know of right now, they tend to be in a historic district, not all of them, and that the potential long range for these kinds of issues coming up and potentially needing more public scrutiny would be along New Hampshire Avenue.
There are...
As that potentially follows the redevelopment plan that we've laid out.
A mixed-use zone is not a residential zone, or it is? As New Hampshire, most of the, most of the auto-related uses that are along New Hampshire Avenue are not considered to be adjacent to residential, and unless they were rezoned to residential, they would not be. So most of the auto-related businesses along New Hampshire Avenue would not be affected by...
But, but if they got, if the, some of the uses along New Hampshire got rezoned and re-zoned residential?
Right.
Which is envisioned in that long-range plan that we've considered.
That actually, because the commercial revitalization overlay zone allows residential development in commercial zones, it's possible that they could develop as residential without being rezoned as residential.
Okay, so the concern about coming up with something that fits long-term isn't, isn't as big an issue, it's more the immediate ones now that are on Carol Avenue in historic district or Flower Avenue, which are not.
Right, and there may be...
Or Flower and Pine.
And there may be one or two on New Hampshire that are confronting...
The last two on the list.
Like possibly the Car Wash, which is confront, maybe confronting residential across New Hampshire Avenue. Right.
You have to refresh my memory about our public process. There's not a site plan, is there a hearing here, or do we have the authority to request a hearing for a development site of this type?
If you wanted a briefing on a project, you could always request that to the, to the developer, but it's the developer's choice whether or not they would want to brief you or to brief you on a project.
Do we have any, do we have any oversight or control of any sort?
We have, I believe we have administrative review.
Yeah, review of the permit.
And it...
But it's not usually a public process.
And do we have any ability to weigh in on a project, even if it doesn't go through site plan, when it gets to the normal permit process? I guess that means not through Park and Planning, right?
Right.
Am I right in that the, the site plan is a Park and Planning process, and permit is a Department of Permitting Services process? Do I have that right?
Well, it's both. The, both involve both agencies. Of course, the planning board makes the decisions on the site plan. Permitting oversees, and they're the ones who actually issue the permits, but we provide oversight and we weigh in to make sure that certain, certain zoning ordinance requirements are adhered to, or if there are previous plan approvals, and those are adhered to as part of permitting, too.
Okay. I won't, I won't say this too loud, cover your ears, Clark's bird.
But I guess the point I was trying to make is, or where I was, where I was trying to get to was, if we, on the council, weigh in on a certain project, and it becomes before the, comes before the planning board, that's meaningful, or if it comes, goes before the county council, it has a certain amount of meaning, does it not? There's a, do we have similar weight in any way when it comes to a pro, a project that goes first to Department of Permitting Services, as these would if they didn't go through site plan?
We, I mean, we would, if, if there were a project that came to us from the Department of Permitting Services, we would review it, but the issue is, is that we have to review it according with our own standards, and so...
The issue is that we have to review it according to our...
Review it according to our, our own regulations and standards. So we would review it, for example, with the stormwater and the tree ordinance, so any area where we have an ordinance, we would review it. For example, we don't review Historic Preservation Commission applications beyond the FASAD Advisory Board, because the FASAD Advisory Board has the regulatory authority to weigh in on that, on those projects.
Do we have design review guidelines of any sort in Tacoma Park?
We have guidelines for, for environmental, we have environmental guidelines, we have green guidelines, but beyond that, we don't actually, the only standards that we have are, are the county zoning. So we can look at a project and say, and then apply the county zoning and say, "When you reviewed this, did you look at this?" Or is, and make sure that those regulations are being applied in the, in the appropriate manner.
The reason I ask about design review guidelines is that I know that in Mount Rainier, which is a municipality within a county that has Park and Planning as the authority, they have their own set of design review guidelines.
And that's, they have statutory authority that was granted them by the county to provide a recommendation to the planning board for projects, or administrative review, it's called an MUTCD, which is a mixed-use town center, so it's, and I believe that there are exemptions, there are also size exemptions similar to this zone, so that if a project is under, and I'm not positive because I haven't looked at that in probably about four or five years, but the way their ordinance is set up is that they have an advisory panel that reviews projects based on a set of design guidelines, and that's similar to what we have with the FASAD Advisory Board in the historic district. However, the way the commercial revitalization overlay zone works is that the council essentially works with the community, and the council serves as the... with the community and the council serves as, uh, the city's basically access or the advisory panel to the, uh, planning board, although you also have some more statutory authority, which I believe also Mount Rainier has, in order that the planning board, both planning boards cannot over, need a supermajority.
Right, that's what I was referring to, okay.
Yeah, so it's, and it's, so it's very similar in that sense, but it does, in Tacoma Park, that's for projects that are over a thousand square feet, so you, there is a lot of control for projects that are above a certain size.
Did you say that, and, did you say that we have a certain amount of authority in the, in the commercial revitalization overlay zone? That's what I heard you just say, right?
Yes.
And is there a way for us to exert a little more authority on particularly on projects that are below a thousand square feet without invoking the site revi- right, site review process?
And we can look into that, but.
It seems to me that that might be an appropriate avenue in that we don't want to burden, or I don't want to burden small projects under a thousand square feet unduly with a site plan, with a site plan review process, um, but I, um, I would be interested in exerting some design control when appropriate, um, without putting that burden on them, and so that's why I bring up the design review guideline process and why I'm attentive to your comment that the commercial revitalization overlay zone, um, triggers a certain amount of review on our part for projects in those zones.
And I, and I, and I thought that when the CROs was added to the Tacoma Park Master Plan, that that was kind of the, the, in, in some ways the substitute for us having planning and zoning authority, was this is our way to get some, some in- input and influence into.
Right.
Into the county and park and planning process.
Right, and, and I'm not, and we, I mean, we do have some review authority, and to the, to date, I'm not sure, I mean, the only project that I've seen come in was a, a, um, it was not an awning, but it was basically the entrance to the front of a building. It was an arcade over, over the front of a store. Um, so there, there haven't been very, there have been very few cases to see how that process works.
Bruce's point is apt here, that we have New Hampshire Avenue, which is not necessarily a CROZ, but is something that we're going to be dealing with in, in earnest, we hope, in the next few years. There's Maple Avenue, there's ten thousand square feet on Maple Avenue, which could convert to commercial.
And those, yeah, and those all have a review process. A thous- most developments are not a thousand square feet.
Right.
Most developments are.
Okay, and that's why this is kind of unique in that sense.
Right, right.
But it's interesting that, that it's kicking, it's kicking off this conversation about of what could be a very burdensome proc- uh, process for a very small project.
Right.
In a, in, in a place where we want to have review, and that's why we put the CROZ in place, but we're, we're having trouble getting the kind of allowing wiggle room and still exerting some, some measure of design control.
And site, most, what the exemption for site plan is usually?
Well, site plan is always a function of the zone that you're in. Uh, in terms of ex- exemptions, there's only, there's a few zones that, um, that are at the discretion of, um, of staff as to whether we want to take it forward or not, and what I mean by that is, uh, in some of the residential areas, um, where you put a private road in that has a, a number of lots, if, if basically we're not going to get anything out of site plan, um, that we would get with approval, with the subdivision process, we wouldn't make them go through that. There's no sense in doing that. If it's just one or a few lots, it's just a subdivision, but that's only a few instances where, uh, you might say there's an exemption. I don't think there's too many exemptions for site plan.
But at what, at how many square feet do you usually apply the site plan process?
Yeah, that's not.
It's not?
It's a function of the zone.
Okay.
Uh, it's not a square foot each requirement.
So it sounds like it might be good to hear from council member Wright in terms of whether you think the, um, historic preservation review would be adequate to deal with the ones that are in the historic district, and it would be good to hear from council member Snipper about the ones on Flower or Piney, if you have familiarity with those, uh, how, how it would be dealing with those not in Historic District. Do you have comments?
I was just going to ask a question, because I, you know, I was noticing that there's a recommendations section, as there always is in our blue sheet, but it's not really recommendations, so I'm curious as to what you're, what you would suggest we do.
Since you're the professional.
Well, um, if you're interested in dissuading auto-related uses from continuing in Tacoma Park, um, I would say continue with, to recommend that the process be clarified, that non-conforming uses are, require site plan. Um, if you are comfortable with having auto-related uses in Tacoma Park, um, and I certainly heard from a lot of people that this particular business, uh, does serve the local community to a large extent, um, then I would recommend that site plan, um, not be required for auto-related uses up to a thousand square feet.
Keep in mind that doesn't, I don't think it precludes the use in that section that we cited too, so we're not making a distinction whether it's an auto-related use or if it's a residential building. Uh, it's, it's strictly a thousand square feet or less, and, um, and I think if you change that, uh, just my take on it, you'd have to change the zoning ordinance. I think you'd have to change the language to get that clarified. I mean, it is a tricky situation because in general, I think that in Old Town, we probably don't want to encourage more auto-related use, but if you look at this particular situation, he's actually has a, a carlet outside that he uses to work on the cars, so to allow him to enclose that, basically workspace, would probably be aesthetically improvement, uh-huh, the neighborhood rather than that blue lift he's using, and so, um.
And I think there are the same types of issues up in the junction as well with the external lifts.
Right, but, I mean, I've said this before, probably I'll get a call from the, the owner now, I don't necessarily want to have Tacoma Park Auto Clinic expanding, because I think that's next to the city lot, which we ideally would like to have redeveloped at some point, and I think probably that, the area between the firehouse and the co-op should be integrated into that redevelopment, um, ideally, so, that's, I'm trying to figure it out. And, but I am, I do think that the historic preservation aspect of it does offer us some, wouldn't quite say protection, but good additional design.
Do you have any observations or properties in your board?
No, there's surprisingly large number of them in my board, I'm always struck by that, and people like the convenience. Um, you know, there are auto-related type places and so on, and that mixed-use kind of thing is appealing to people, so I think it's a balance, and it's pretty hard to decide where that balance is, but I, you know, I'd be, I would be reluctant to see them all, all the auto-type things disappear, for example.
Did you have other comments, if you want, Bruce? Okay, Ellen?
I just want to say that I, I hope at the end of the day, we'll make a decision about good public policy and not about issues that we have with a particular business that happens to be an auto clinic. I think that's really bad public policy. It's not bad to think about where the auto clinics exist, so that you can kind of try on the idea of like, well, like what does this mean in different areas, and, and, and think about that, because it helps you kind of understand what ramifications are, but in terms of any individual business and whether or not we want to see them expand or not, I, I personally don't want to make a, a decision based on that. It's not my, it's, it's not my job to decide which businesses grow and don't grow in the city, that's the job of business, and it's not, to me, my public realm. And the other thing that I'll say is that if you have a situation where you have a piece of land and you want to assemble land for a greater public good, the tool that is appropriate for that is eminent domain. That is really what it's designed for, and so then I think rather than trying to kill off or squeeze out a business, we should address head-on that we would like a larger project with a greater public good, and before you actually took somebody's property, hopefully you would go and negotiate with them and, and work with them first, but it should be part of a, it should be part of a, a long-range plan to address a greater public good.
And if you can remind us again, the, the two-step process that got questioned to us, the DPS kicked it to park and park, park and planning, and then you brought it to us, and what the determinations were by, by each agency?
I, I, I'm not sure what the determination was by DPS, uh, because they never told me who reviewed that for them. Uh, it was just the, the applicant actually walked in, uh, to our information counter, and I started chatting with him about it. Um, and, I mean, he, he just said, I was told to come over here, uh, to park and planning, and then when I looked at it, I reviewed it with a number of our people, uh, both from community-based planning and from our zoning section, and their reading on this was, uh, that it, it met the intent of that first section, which was the under, under the thousand square feet, um, of, of building, uh, that they could expand by, and, I mean, based on what was told to me by the applicant, uh, was they were planning on a seven hundred square foot building that was, I guess approximately fifteen foot tall, I guess is what he was looking at.
So, so the determinations were, it was unclear, but lacking some other direction, you, you were, you were inclined to say that there was not a site plan review process?
That's correct, but, but out of, um, uh, just based on other plans that we've looked at recently with, with, uh, with Alana, we wanted to just make sure that, uh, before they went any further, we wanted to bring it to her attention and say, what is your read on this?
Okay.
Good. Um, you said something a moment ago, Mr. Cronenberg, about rewriting the zoning ordinance? If we went a certain way, and I just wanted to make sure I understood which way that was. Was that way, were you saying that we would, that there would perhaps be a re- a rewrite of the zoning ordinance if we said that non-conforming uses under a thousand square feet require a site plan review?
Well, right now, it's just building, it doesn't say use.
Okay, so you're, so I think I heard you say.
Yes.
If we came, we came down saying if even uses.
Right.
Under a thousand require a site plan, then you'd have to go in and make a modification? Okay.
If, if I may suggest, uh, we are, uh, undertaking the process of rewriting our zoning ordinance right now.
Okay.
And that, that we've, we're a year into it, uh, right now, nine months, and this might be an opportunity, uh, for, um, for the city, Alana, to at least force their concerns about certain sections here.
That's a broader topic.
It's much broader, but it's, uh, it's going full steam, uh, in terms of the ordinance.
And I was having this odd conversation, and I missed, missed the context for that, the wider process is?
That they're in the midst of a, of a, a ordinance review and perhaps rewrite right now.
Of.
At park and planning.
Of everything?
Of the zoning ordinance.
Right, cool. Okay.
So we ought to, we ought to appoint a committee to look at that one.
Um, anybody else? Would anybody like to offer a proposed position, or you want me to do that?
Dan's about it. I will, um, I, I would propose that our position be to allow non-conforming uses under a thousand square feet to, to not require site plan review for non-conforming uses under a thousand square feet. As is the ca- that's, that's the current reading in, to, to just stick with what the fifty-nine C one-eight dot two sixteen B says.
Two sixteen.
The first reference in this second paragraph, it says, specifically under the portion of the ordinance titled special provisions, existing buildings and uses, the overlay zone appears to intend to limit the expansion of non-conforming uses to a thousand square feet and subject this expansion to site plan review. What that means is that, in my understanding is, if a use has, has a expansion, if, if there's an expansion, maybe I've got this completely wrong, if there's an expansion under a thousand square feet and it's based on the use, it doesn't require a site plan review. Isn't that what we're talking about?
And I was following you until you started reading the language, and then I looked at two sixteen B, and I was like, where is that language?
It's, uh, two fourteen, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And that, and that could be the, the.
Oh, maybe I've got, yeah, maybe I read the wrong portion there. Two fourteen says, only non-conforming buildings and not non-conforming uses go through site plan for any expansion regardless of size. I see, that's where the.
I believe that's the interpretation that you've been discussing as the correct interpretation.
So, does it say that the first section says, if it's over a thousand square feet, it requires site plan regardless? That's correct, and the second provision of two fourteen says, you only need site plan.
If it's a non-conforming building.
It's a non-conforming building.
Right.
But in this case, it's an, it's a conforming building. No, it's a conforming building and it's under a thousand square feet.
Right, that's correct.
So, uh, so the clarification needed in this case is?
He's given it, as lo- if you all follow that. Um, the, the, what I'm hearing you say is that, is that non-conforming uses that are less than a thousand square feet do not need to go through site plan and can go through the normal administrative permit review process that any other conforming use would go through that's less than a thousand square feet. I'm seeing a fair number of nots.
That, that way of stating it is fairly clear to me.
Okay.
Now, are you, I thought you were making a distinction between building and use, which I wasn't entirely clear on.
The ordinance does make a distinction between building and use, and they have, and the ordinance in that same section says that buildings that are non-conforming do have to go through site plan if they're less than a thousand square feet, and if that were to be changed, then the ordinance probably also, the zoning ordinance would have to be amended, so, but I, most, to my knowledge, most buildings are inconformous with, um, the zone, with the possible exception of the property on the south, east, southwest corner of New Hampshire and East West Highway, or Ethan Allen, where I'm not sure, but the building may actually be in the right of way, so, but for the most part, buildings are inside their required areas.
And this expansion, a seven hundred foot expansion, would still have appropriate setback and height requirements?
Right.
It would fall within?
Right, right.
So, it's, it is confusing, because.
Yeah, let me.
We're talking about a building.
Yeah.
Which fits, but a use.
Which is non-conforming.
Which is non-conforming.
And, and so let me see if I can try restating what I thought, you stated very clearly, and if I can, then I understand it. We're talking about a conforming, the instance here that we're talking about is a building that's conforming with a proposed addition of under a thousand square feet with a non-conforming use not having to go through site plan review.
Correct, that's what I understand.
Nod, nod.
Yeah, nods, nods, yes. I, I only see, I, I, do you have a head nod yet?
Yes.
Okay, we agree, yes, that's the way to go.
Thank you.
It's, it's, we have unanimous agreement up here.
It's a good thing this didn't drag on till eleven.
Then we'd all be bobbleheads.
Now, does this come back for a couple readings, so we can do this?
No, no, we, we've done this. And hopefully we've taken care of it in a fairly expeditious manner, and, and I thank you for coming and helping to, uh, clarify this. And so, we're adjourned. And so, we're adjourned.